Yesterday, yes.
Okay, everybody, let's get the show on the road. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Weneka Village Council Study Session for March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that everybody you're muted or turn off your cell phone or other noise-making electronic devices.
Working? This is the COVID-free microphone, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, public comment. This is the time of the evening where members of the public can address the council on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. The item on tonight's agenda is seasonal street closures. So if you've got anything else you'd like to talk to us about, come on up to the microphone, share your thoughts with us, and we'll hear what you have to say. Seeing nobody approaching the microphone, I will close the public comment and we'll move forward with the main course this evening, which is seasonal street closures for outdoor dining.
Nice transition.
Did I do something that I don't even know?
Yes, you did.
Oh, sorry.
No, it was good. Main course.
I'm not with it tonight. Tonight, village council will be discussing a new approval process for seasonal street closures for outdoor dining. I just thought I would open it up with comments before I turn it over to Kristin and Liz, but this is an interesting challenge and an interesting concept. You know, COVID kind of brought along some opportunities that we really hadn't considered in the past, and I will say that it has been really received greatly by the public. People seem to really enjoy it. You know, from my perspective, I think it's an awesome idea, and I love the vibrancy. I walk, as you guys all know, I walk my dog just about every night right along here. And just to see all the people out in the street and the music and the activity is really something special and something we haven't seen in this town before. So I think it's a worthwhile discussion to have with the dining season coming up. The one thing that I think I would like for everybody to at least keep in the back of their minds is I'm hoping nobody here on council thinks that what they've been doing in Glencoe is a good idea, because, you know, after all the time, the effort, the planning we've put into creating this wonderful environment, you know, to start putting concrete barricades on the street to facilitate on-street dining just doesn't seem to be consistent with what we're trying to achieve with our streetscape programming and other things like that. So, but maybe you guys like that. Maybe you like it, but at the same time, I, you know, I know my vision for this community and the vision that's been shared with me from a lot of residents is not Glencoe. So that might be a good starting point is, you know, how do we do those same things and validate them without ending up having our streets look like afterthoughts? So with that said, I think I've said just about all I'm going to say this evening and let you guys hash it out, but I'll turn it over to Kristin and Liz to give us the presentation.
Good evening, President Rents and council. Tonight, we will be discussing a proposed policy for approving seasonal street closures for outdoor dining. When the global COVID-19 pandemic started in March of two thousand and twenty, the mitigation efforts included state and county restrictions on indoor dining. In response, many communities, including Weneka, expanded outdoor dining options on the public right-of-way. As an emergency response to support businesses, temporary permits and licenses were issued to authorize expanded dining areas on sidewalks and public streets. During the past two years, outdoor dining areas became popular gathering areas, enhancing community vitality and supporting economic recovery. We do anticipate that the demand for outdoor dining will continue in two thousand and twenty-two and beyond. In the spring of two thousand and twenty, village staff reached out to every restaurant to provide support and creative ideas for expanding outdoor dining options. Twelve new outdoor seating areas were administratively approved that year using the existing outdoor seating permit process. After a successful season and the continued pandemic-related restrictions, the demand for outdoor dining remains strong. In two thousand and twenty-one, sixteen additional or expanded outdoor seating areas were approved. In addition, there was new expanded seating on private patios. In two thousand and twenty, there was also a new request to temporarily close Chestnut Court, Toco on the south side, and Good Grapes on the north side. This was the first such request for a seasonal street closure for the purpose of outdoor dining. The closure was approved in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one via the outdoor seating permit process. Since this permit process was designed for outdoor dining on public sidewalks, and now that the pandemic emergency measures have ceased, there are additional factors that should be considered when closing a street, such as patron safety, duration, and the impact on parking and vehicular traffic. Staff is seeking council input on a new process for approving street closures for outdoor dining. Economic Development Coordinator Liz DeChamp will present the various options for consideration.
Thank you, Kristin. Given the context of our current street closure policy and its outcomes the last two years, the principal objective and policy question the council is being asked to determine is, should the village of Weneka create a new process in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two to consider the seasonal closure of public streets for outdoor dining? Tonight, we'll present three policy options to answer this question. As in any policy discussion, criteria are used to assess policy alternatives. We spent time analyzing our current policy, hearing firsthand from businesses in the public, and researching best practices of street closure policies in eight different suburban communities around the region. Based on this careful assessment, four decision-making criteria rose to the top. The first is efficiency. In this case, we consider efficiency as a measurement of process administration, specifically time and ease. It considers the extent to which the policy keeps the application process timely and straightforward. The second criteria is equity. Equity asks who benefits and who is impacted. Does the policy maximize the opportunity for all parties to give input and discuss a request, and does it minimize the one-size-fits-all approach to review? The third criteria is context of the request. This asks if the policy frames the decision-making process as what is the impact of this particular street closure, as opposed to treating each street closure request the same. The policy should maximize the opportunity to consider factors such as location, business activity on the block, parking and traffic impacts, and opportunities for innovation and vibrancy. The fourth criteria is transparency. Does the policy operate in a way that's easy for others to understand and see decisions being made? Transparency maximizes openness, communication, and accountability. Option number one, continue to approve street closure requests as part of the existing no-fee outdoor seating area permit. This is the keep-the-status quo approach, where we stay the course and not change the process from what we've used since two thousand and twenty to encourage innovative ways to bring diners to the village. Using this option, closing a street for outdoor dining is weighed the same as using a sidewalk for outdoor dining. The positive implication of this option is that staff and businesses have used this process for two years and know how it works. The process moves quickly. The negative implications of this option are that it does not adequately address impacts on neighboring businesses. It minimizes the opportunity for area businesses to give their input and of the village council to discuss the impact of the closures. Second, it does not fully address traffic or parking concerns. Not all streets have the same amount of car traffic. Some are busy thoroughfares and others are quiet side streets. Parking, as we all know, is in very high demand in the village, and if parking spaces are closed for outdoor dining, the impact of this on neighboring businesses must be considered. Policy option number two is to discontinue any temporary seasonal use of public streets. Under this policy option, outdoor dining options on the public right-of-way would return to what was offered pre-COVID, and restaurants would only be able to request public sidewalks for outdoor dining. The positive implication of this option is that no single business would be granted exclusive use of a public street. The negative impact of this option are that it takes a one-size-fits-all approach. It says no to all applicants regardless of the benefits. Our mantra at the village is to come from a place of yes to new ideas. The policy also eliminates the opportunity for innovation and vibrancy. It ignores the positive feedback from customers who've enjoyed outdoor dining on Chestnut Court, and it removes the possibility of any potential closures that could drive additional traffic to other districts. And policy option number three, to create a new council approval process, such as a license agreement specifically for seasonal street closure requests, and would be separate from the outdoor seating area permit approval process. The positive implications of this option is that it improves transparency, clarity, and equity. First, the village can develop a new process to improve openness and communication. Second, it can identify terms of use specific to the business and its request. This alternative allows more information to be exchanged and provides a better understanding of the impact of neighbors, parking, and traffic before a decision is rendered. Third, each request can be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. The negative implication of this option is that it could take additional time to approve a license agreement, but only to a degree. However, if requests are received in advance, this process should not impede the timely review and approval of a license agreement. At this time, the staff is recommending policy option number three, create a new license agreement process. The principal objective of the policy is to determine the best alternative to create an effective, equitable, and transparent decision-making process to consider the seasonal closure of public streets for outdoor dining. We believe creating a new license agreement addresses this objective and will create positive outcomes. It will provide guidance and oversight of the seasonal use of public streets. In the future, should a business or nonprofit request the use of a public right-of-way, a system will be in place to address that request, and it'll stipulate terms and conditions of the public street usage. So if we pursue instituting a new policy to create a license agreement for the seasonal street closure, terms and conditions should be considered in an agreement. Other license agreements and permits the village issues have insurance requirements, including certificates of insurance with certain levels of general liability, indemnification, and hold harmless agreements. Other considerations include the duration of the close, addressing how long it will be closed, is the street closed for days, weeks, is it closed for months? Hours of the closure, addressing the impact on neighboring businesses and residents, and if the village should assess a fee for the use of the public street. Currently, we do not assess a fee or require one for the outdoor seating area permit. So this is something now that communities are addressing all over. They're having conversations everywhere about this to review their street closure policies. Thank you. So at this time, we're happy to take questions.
Sounds like you've surveyed kind of what's happening, and I agree, I think maybe some of our neighbors have created more of a haphazard-looking scene. I'm just, do you know where, how, where they've fallen in this, how they're administratively processing those requests?
Yeah, so we reached out to eight different, oh.
We reached out to eight different communities all over the region, so anywhere from St. Charles and Geneva to Glencoe and, you know, Willmett and Northbrook. And a lot of it is through administrative process. And then, you know, for example, in Arlington Heights, they have Arlington Alfresco, and that's two major streets downtown that are totally closed to traffic. And they are now assessing a tax, a point seven-five percent tax on diners. So that goes straight through. In, for example, in Park Ridge, the council literally on Monday was just discussing this very thing, and they're considering assessing a fee per square foot. So, you know, yeah, it ranges, it's a wide range, yeah.
Trusty Craig, I believe, Liz, you mentioned Glencoe, just discussing it this week, and therefore it's somewhat split on it.
Yes, yes, they are. Yeah, they're split, yeah.
And our context with Willmett, they're not allowing street closures, but they are allowing restaurants to expand beyond footprint and front of other businesses if they're closed.
Oh, interesting.
Create more space for dining activities, but they, if they're not closed, it shifts.
Okay. Thank you, that's helpful.
I'm glad you're considering things like, and you're on the street and somebody slips in a crack, is it our fault, is it the restaurant's fault? We're all gonna, you know, we're the deep pocket, so we're gonna get hit. So I think that's really smart. I'm not, I'm not sure what other expenses we have that would justify fees, but, I mean, if there are expenses, we might consider. If there aren't, then we probably won't. But the liability and the insurance clearly is something I would, I'm focused on.
And that's the case with the sidewalk permits?
Sidewalk permits, okay.
Yeah, we have them now.
Oh, yeah.
That was my question as well, is what do we do for sidewalks currently and, you know, do we charge insurance and what that threshold is? Because we certainly don't want to have it up a chilling effect. I mean, there's a certain amount of, we just see people walking on sidewalks every day, right? So I'm just kind of curious what those thresholds are.
So in the current outdoor seating permit process for sidewalks and for the temporary street closure, we do require a certificate of insurance that does name the village as an additional insured. So it's one.
Yeah, it's a million dollars and then, you know, up to two million dollars, yeah. So, and, yeah, it's additional insured for current.
Two million and then an aggregate, and that's typically what we've done over pre-COVID, whenever anybody's.
And then that would be in line with what a typical business, you know, general liability coverage.
Right, and we also have tortugacy, the government tortugacy act that protects us from many conditions of crap in the sidewalk. If we don't know about it, we're informed and we do nothing about it, that's different. But if we have, you know, we do have general tortugacy that protects us as well from a lot of situations, but between that and the insurance, you know, we're, you know, we're that.
Is there any more exposure, charging a fee to use a street versus a free sidewalk?
No.
Okay.
No.
And then, and then when you mentioned Willmett not closing streets, is there any mention of them closing parking stalls but still keeping the street open?
My house is, yeah.
No, or a barricade.
When I spoke to the village manager about that this week during their streetscape project, they were doing some of that, but they've since allowed some of those people to be on the sidewalk and not in parking stalls. I think the secret restaurant test, they're riding against the herd line, but they're not allowed, they, they place a premium on parking.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think if you look at Willmett, they have a different situation. Those are major arterials right through their downtown versus Chestnut Court. I mean, that's a tough discussion, right? Because, you know, it's kind of a dead end.
Right, but not Chestnut or Lincoln.
No, I, yeah, I get it, I get it.
Right.
That's, that's the issue that I see a little bit here. This has been sort of framed like Chestnut Court, yes or no, for these two businesses on Chestnut Court, and I have a lot of sympathy for both sides of this, but it's a bigger policy issue here. You know, there are a lot of streets, there are a lot of alleys, there are a lot of ways that businesses could spill out of their footprint, and, you know, why can't Eric Fossey go on to Merrill? Why can't, you know, some of the alleys behind some of the stores in Hubbard Woods, why can't they go into the alleys?
Gauge.
Gauge. And so, you know, this is being framed a little bit like right over here, but it's, I think it's bigger than that. And I, this is one of those economist things, on the one hand, on the other hand, and we can go back and forth, but, you know, da-da-da, like every community around. I thought Eric Fossey's letter was really quite good. I mean, he talked about, you know, the value of the properties. You know, what's, if you're renting, Toco's renting that building, I don't know if they own it or rent it, but if they're renting it, and the owner of that property now has the potential for X amount of revenue and a part of a footprint that's not his, but it's part of the revenue to the building, his property, Chris, you know this, his property just went up quite a bit on the village back here. And so, you know, I like the, I like the idea of having a license process, but I was gonna ask, Liz, what it, can you frame sort of the, over the last year or so, the usage, you know, is it every night on Chestnut Court? Is it elsewhere in the village?
At what time?
What, yeah, kind of, you know, are there any limits to it? Have there been any limits to it?
Yes, there have been. So part of the outdoor seating area permit from Good Grapes and Toco did ask for hours and days, and my recollection from two thousand and twenty-one for Toco was Tuesday through Sunday, five to ten, and it was during the duration of the outdoor seating area permit, which is April one through November thirtieth. The weather didn't warm up until mid-May, so during the cold, and then after about mid-September, people stopped wanting to eat outside. And then I believe Good Grapes was around that same time, probably give or take a couple hours, give or take a couple days, so there.
Was Good Grapes, grapes, every day, Tuesday through Sunday as well?
The, close to it, right. She'll probably, you know, Teresa's here, but, you know, and be able to have the specifics of that, but pretty close, yeah.
But Tuesday through Sunday, five to ten.
Or a Wednesday through a Sunday or Saturday.
Is a pretty full, ongoing usage. I mean, it's not a limited, there's really not much limit to that.
No.
Right?
And for those businesses to really require or need the sixteen parking spaces that go, what are their hours that overlap with that timing?
Right, so the, it varies. There's five or six different businesses that are on Chestnut Court, and Bella's and Heritageure closes around five or six o'clock. Lakeside Foods closes around six-thirty or seven, depending on their summer hours, and those are the main businesses that are on Chestnut Court. And Bratschke closes at four or five o'clock. Part of our temporary outdoor dining policy that we put in place in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, which sort of allowed this, asked that the businesses send a letter to all of their neighbors, letting them know this was going to be, you know, the request, and we encouraged them but didn't require them to have letters of support from those businesses to show us that, the very least that they had talked to those folks, and both Teresa and Bruno did that. They went out, they talked to the bank at the corner, and they had those conversations. So, you know, and what, what letters of support they did have, they produced, so.
So there's a new restaurant going in around the corner, though, right?
Jamoto, that's part of five oh one?
Yeah, yeah.
On Oak Street?
So, and it's, I mean, is five oh one currently only is using sidewalk space? And were they providing the letters of support for Chestnut Court closing? Because they're a direct competitor to this idea that a restaurant's getting an unfair advantage of additional squib footage.
Right, they, they, I'm not sure if they reached out to five oh one. I believe the, the impact, we had said if your parking or street was going to be closed. We did work really closely with them, especially in two thousand and twenty when this first happened, and encouraged them. They were using parking spaces in front, they got the curbside parking, they now have greenhouses, they were planning on doing them on the sidewalk. We eventually worked with them and were able to, you know, encourage them to put them on the private seating, but on the private patio. Jamoto is going to open sometime this spring. Part of the West Elm streetscape is to expand a bump out right there, their corner. They're really excited about that because that's going to give them a lot of extra seating, and they'll get new sidewalks. So they're, they're looking forward to that. We did inform them, and I believe that they, you know, they were informed of what was happening. You know, and Bob, to your point, you know, we definitely, we had talked to Eric and Glenn about what their concerns were as well, and as Kristin mentioned, we did reach out to all restaurants in two thousand and twenty and then in two thousand and twenty-one, and when someone said, can we do this? Is this a possibility? Is this a thing? We're like, well, we haven't done that before. What would it take and how do we get there? And, you know, other towns were closing their downtowns a lot because the businesses were asking them to. And then we went around and asked, do you want to close the street? Some people were like, no, we're not going to close that street. So, you know, those that came to us and said, can we close it, those restaurants in particular, we work with them.
Well, what, what other examples were there beyond Chestnut Court?
Of street closures?
Yeah.
No, no one, no one. I, yeah, no.
It might be kind of, when you're asking, Chris, the concern of the concrete barriers we should have to share, are there things that, you know, consistent with our streetscape plan that we could be doing on a wider basis to open up options? I seem to remember when we were talking about the streetscape concepts, there were ideas about using the parking spaces and, what are those mobile, like?
Or I, or I brought up on Chestnut Court, if we're going through a streetscape, if you don't mind losing stalls, make the sidewalk out to the street.
Yeah.
Permanently.
So are there things like whether permanent or even interim seasonal things that aren't going to look like, you know, concrete barriers? Are there things that we could consider as part of this so that, you know, we can expand the options just beyond, you know, the kind of unique space we've got right here?
Trusty Craig, the parklets?
Yeah, the parklets.
Those were being evaluated before we really could finalize the streetscape program?
Yeah.
Trying to.
And before COVID.
Exactly. So once the streetscape program improved and we had expanded certain areas for bump outs and lightened sidewalks in certain areas, the parklet became less of a priority.
I guess are there, are there ways that we can aesthetically spill out into the street, keep streets open a little bit, I mean, that we're, we haven't been talking about that we should be thinking about as part of this?
Sure.
That's gonna be a tough one because, well, that, and there's a couple things. Well, I share your love of, I'm up here, I see, I love you, and I do also, if I'm somebody like Town and Oak, where I can't, I've sat in those chairs in Town and Oak, it's trying to park, it's a little unnerving, I must admit.
We are talking together, like, oh, man, we're gonna be taken out.
Exactly. One, one gas I'm missing, great, I'm gone. So, and that, that's a concern. If we, being as, going around trying to look at the parklet, as, as we get more and more popular in more of the places, it is hard to find parklet on a normal day, not even a weekend, there are a few times.
And I think another thing to keep in mind, granted, this all happened because of COVID. The people we have, they're asking the questions, rented the space as it was happily with the outdoor seating on the sidewalks. So whatever we decide to do, there's gotta be a cost to offset additional rent. I have no problem with restaurants being next to each other, it's great, it's competition, it also makes it vibrant.
Agglomeration.
Yes, a street of all restaurants is awesome, because everyone's going to be busy. But if one guy's only paying twenty-five percent of the rent and has two hundred seats, that's not fair, nor is it fair to the village to close a street.
Well.
And I think that's, I'm sorry, I think that's the balance between whether, whether there's a comfort with actually manipulating and driving the market or the bikers. And there's probably a balance between how much manipulation of the market we're comfortable doing and how much bikers we can get in exchange for that, so.
I mean, like I said, like in front of Toco on Chestnut Court, you could take the parking spaces away, have eight more feet of sidewalk all the time.
I, I do think those businesses rely on those sixteen spaces.
Well, keep that in mind, though, then.
The ones that are closed, that I was asking if they overlap with the closure of it?
But that's current businesses, that could change.
In theory, yes.
Right, it could be a different restaurant, or it could be something different.
Which is nice about this option three, because then you could look at it on a yearly basis, and then as businesses change over, you have the flexibility. I mean, you could start restricting it to when those businesses close largely at six o'clock, it sounds like.
So I thought, and not to make it tougher for anybody, is that maybe there's a whole planning and zoning process to go through this with the public hearings, and maybe then, I know it's a tough, just, but maybe then it's attributed to the building, so if people change leases or whatever, that building might have the ability to expand out into the street at times. And then, then at that point, once you got the ability, then it is a yearly administrative permit process and fee of some type.
Going along with that, I was wondering if we were to consider a fee or a tax or whatever it is for it, what are the costs to the administrative side? What's it going to cost us from your man-hours, from going through a process, for us all looking individually at each license? If there's twelve one year, sixteen another year, we expect more restaurants moving to town, I imagine we could estimate, what, twenty-plus this coming year for requests? Like, what, what would the cost of your time be? And ours, especially.
Trusty Mancini, I think the distinction here is that the license agreement would cover a street closure. We're not, just to be clear, suggesting that we change the routine outdoor seating permit process for sidewalks. So I don't anticipate that we would have twenty street closure requests. I think twenty is an appropriate number for outdoor seating permits on a sidewalk.
And that would not require, that's a little initially.
That would not require this license agreement. We're not suggesting that. The routine use of sidewalks, staff is not recommending a change to that.
The routine use of sidewalks, um, staff is not recommending a change to that process. That is a simple application with a, a simple drawing of where you want to place your tables and chairs, ensuring that there's the five feet spacing for safety reasons, and a, um, insurance certificate. So that's streamlined and has some staff time involved, but not significant. Um, we do an internal review process to make sure the insurance certificate is adequate and meets our required guidelines. And then our public works department does weigh in on the map to make sure that it meets the safety criteria.
Before we get too deep into the weeds and deliberation, it might be good to hear what all the other people in the room have to say. Because that might color how we think about this as we try to muddle through policy issues and come to a decision one way or another. So I'd like to do is, uh, open the microphone up for public comment and, uh, hear what the folks here have to say about this. Door's always open.
Hello, want to see it?
Hold on, Bruno, hold on.
What's up?
Uh, so we'll start in the, the front row, and since I'm left-handed, we'll start here. So, anybody in this, in this first row, like to address council, come on up.
Sure thing, uh, thank you for this opportunity. My name's John McEnroe, I live at 561 Willow. I've been a resident of Weneka for approximately 31 years. Uh, I've got to say, I really want to congratulate the council on being so adept at reacting to the COVID policy and, and opening the Chestnut Court and making other accommodations to other restaurants. You really saved a viable industry in this village. And it's an industry which, you know, I've been here for 31 years, we never had. You know, the, the restaurant industry in Weneka was a joke up until maybe five, six years ago, and it's gotten so much better right now. And the only thing I, I would emphasize is that the, uh, street closure process has, has been successful. And yes, it does redound to the benefit of, of the restaurants, and maybe the landlord, if he's got a percentage rent clause. But it's been so successful because it's fabulously popular with Weneka residents. We want it, we like it, we want to keep it. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Great, thanks. Next, please. Now, Bruno, you can come on up.
Oh, my gosh.
Buenasera, well, thank you very much, everyone. I, um, I really appreciate, um, all the village do for us, uh, they're very professional. Uh, when I came here three years ago, I was scared. When I see Talsai, you know, on Chestnut Court, I was there five o'clock, six o'clock, seven o'clock. There was nobody around. There was no car parking, nobody passed by. And me, I say, now, I'm 65 years old, I'm putting a million dollar on my shoulder, should I do this? Every day I was asking this question. The reason why I, I decided to come here in Weneka was, uh, one, um, I have a lot of customer from downtown. The second one, I really wanted my life, I don't want to quit, I don't want to retire, I feel young. And I, I thought Weneka was a good place for me, uh, to embrace the community, to express my personality, what I am and what I want to do. Uh, you know, Toko is not only a restaurant, Toko, uh, is close to family. You know, every funeral, we sent, uh, we sent, uh, food for the family. We give away 3,000 pack of pasta, 2,000 bottle of barley oil. We, uh, donate $50,000 to, between school and other school. We, 10 days ago, we got a refugee from Ukraine. So Toko is really a touch of life, a touch of something. And that's what I do every day, I spend 15 hours a day of my life to be there. Uh, and that's not about money. I'm the only guy, I don't have a partner, I don't have an investor, whatever happen every day, I go home, I longer have a happiness, I see my employer, I employ 45 people. That's what I want in my life. So it's not about money. I bring, we did 120,000 people in two years and four months. So this is telling you, these are not just Weneka people. It's people coming from everywhere. Toko's bringing people from a different state, from New York, from everywhere. The community, the old Italian community professor from Lutera, Tata, they all come to Toko and eat. Why, no, it's a good atmosphere, the food is great. And, uh, and, uh, and everybody say that, everybody goes out and say, no, thank you, Bruno. You know, and that's what I live for. So it's not about the money. Now, we have also project to, on Chestnut Court, I bought the property, as you know, uh, the eight or nine Oak Street. So it's from Chestnut to Oak Street, where the office store was. So we planning, uh, I'm doing something that will bring, really, people from all over the world with a rooftop. It's a project of $3 million that, uh, I'm doing. I'm putting myself again in challenge. I want to leave at 2:90, I want to be here and go. That's so, uh, you know, I appreciate, I mean, whatever it's comfortable. I just want to say, if you go out now, you see four car parking there, after five o'clock, there is nobody. You know, we really bring to the community, Toko's bringing a lot to everyone, to neighbors, we bring more people, more customer for the neighbors. These are all people, they're here, they're friends, and they come, you know, to support me, Ben. So, uh, whatever is the decision, you know, I'm fine, I'm, you know, uh, I just want to tell you, every, every, there is every, uh, from downtown, the Black, uh, uh, Clark Street. If you go on Randolph, that I was the pioneer of Fulton Market, I created the area. I went there 21 years ago, it was me, the homeless, the rat, and the prostitute. And now, and now it's, you know, I used to pay $1,700 a month in rent at the same space that I sold to Alinia. Now they're paying $22,000 a month. So this is telling you the benefit, you know, for the community, for the real estate, for everyone. So I'm here to do something good, not, you know, and I, I appreciate everything. I agree I should pay fee, you know, for, uh, for the street. Uh, the insurance will be $3 million, not $1 million, that's what we have right now. Uh, and I just want to remind that I, I do pay $50,000 in real estate tax. Every year, for the two property, I pay the tax to Mr. Hoffman, so I pay the tax. And for the other property that I have, I pay another $25,000 in tax, so I do pay the tax. And also, we bring last year $400,000 in sales tax. And plus this, and plus that, so we, we, we pay, it's not all money goes in my pocket, I, you know, it's so, uh, 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 and also the, the, I mean, it really, it, it's a gift. I, I was so scared, and now I just thank you God every day that I did this move. And, uh, not only for the business, but for the people that I found here, people fantastic, fantastic community, fantastic people. Uh, and that's more important for me. I appreciate your support, thank you, thank you.
Anyone else on that side? Okay, coming over here. Hi, Teresa.
So first, I'm going to answer a couple of questions that they came up. So Good Grapes' permit for the last year was, uh, Monday through Sunday, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Now, we're not even open on Mondays, but we have had the opportunity to have other organizations host events, so that was just a cover. So, for example, we had the Women of, uh, Women's League of Voters, who had the two local senators. The book stall did a couple events and killed, including a children's event that went phenomenally well, which I'm not sure how that worked out at a wine store, but it did. You know, so we covered that. And the other thing I would say is, we only closed the street when it was warranted. You know, so, um, because candidly, it's a lot of work. So on Tuesdays, it was never closed unless the book stall or someone else was there. Um, and so I think that answers, Bob. And then, um, I also think it's very telling, um, that when I look at the grievances, the people who've complained, the three companies, that it doesn't include 501 Local, it doesn't include Jamoto, it doesn't include Hair Couture, who's next door, and it doesn't include Bella's across the street. Right? So if you look at the six businesses, you know, um, only one of those businesses that's on Chestnut Court has filed a complaint, and I don't believe they're represented here. You know, so I, I just, I, I kind of got caught up in that of, so if we're going to file a grievance, like, for me, it's very important to understand why. And I, I understand that in theory, this is a much bigger policy issue, but as was discussed, no one else has applied yet, and I know someone else might. I'm not saying they won't. But right now, kind of are talking about Chestnut Court and then building a backup plan if someone else applies, right? So I ran some, I have a very different response, I have actually a three-pronged response. So I, I'm going to focus initially on Chestnut Court. So prior to outdoor seating on Chestnut Court, parking spaces were absorbed by the restaurants. Whether anyone wants to hear that or not, they just were. You know, so closing Chestnut Court pushed Toko's and 501 Local's diners, their customers, into the post office parking lot. That, that's, my customers were always there, right? Because when you come and dine, it's much different. My transaction's like 15 minutes, right? 15, 20 minutes prior to having outdoor seating. So closing that really just pushed the customer patrons onto the sidewalk. And with what we filed, and I lined my hours with Bruno, closing at 5:00 p.m. So there is a 90-minute overlap between closing Chestnut Court at 5:00 p.m. and Lakeside closing at 6:30. I think on Sundays, they close at 4:30, so take that off. And so Lakeside is in the unique position of having two customer entrances, one on Elm Street and one on Chestnut Court. There are 21 parking spaces on Elm Street, east of Chestnut Street. And the Elm Street businesses that would compete for those, the vast majority, except what I believe for one, is closed at or before 5:00 p.m. So those spaces, you know, have a lot of viability to come in at that entrance. So at 5:00 p.m., Village Hall closes, that frees up 34 additional parking spaces in the parking lot and eight additional parking spaces behind Village Hall. So during that 90-minute overlap, there are 63 potential parking spaces available to Lakeside customers that drive to the store. And I emphasize "drive" because they have a lot of foot traffic. So if that's a factor, like when we get that type of complaint, I, I think that, um, the responsibility is on Lakeside to give the data that says during that 90-minute overlap, how many of their customers have driven to the store and are shopping simultaneously. So I just don't buy into that they have a parking issue. And I wish they were here, I'm not trying to say anything behind them, I just, I don't buy into it. 63 spaces? I don't know, have you ever been in there when there's 63 people shopping? I mean, the store's not that big, it's just not viable. So I, I, I have trouble aligning with that, um, that perception. So I'm not saying they're wrong, I'm just saying I have trouble aligning with it. And so then I would say, you know, for my second response, you know, blowing out someone else's candle doesn't make you shine any brighter. But yet, here we are, talking about a purported unfair advantage that, against Toko, that could put Good Grapes into the enviable position of being collateral damage. To state the obvious, I'm not appreciative of that at all. Hopefully, that should be really clear. I'm not included in the complaint, you know, but I support Toko closing the street, I support myself closing the street. And, and I think for me, it's really important to understand that unfair advantage. I, the, Eric Fossey's letter, the first time I heard that was referenced here, I haven't read it, so I can't speak to it. But I do question why, I, I would like to know, because obviously, if there's a complaint, both have applied, applied for an outdoor seating permit, and they've both been rejected. Right? I mean, that must be the case, you know, and you've got Chestnut Street sitting over there, right outside of Fred's. You know, if they want to expand it, you know, I assume that both have complained, and, and therefore, they're rejected, don't know why. And I'd love to hear the reason for that, of why they are unable to expand. Um, and then perhaps the complaint is based on that because their applications were rejected, their, uh, diners are choosing to go to another restaurant, Toko, and therefore, it's driving revenue loss. I mean, that would be logical in the complaint. So if that's true, and those restaurants don't want to share that data privately with someone, I think the village should back into that based on sales tax revenue. So what is the financial damage to those businesses? And the reason I struggle with that is, um, I know personally firsthand that when Fred's is busy, they don't take carryout orders. They don't even answer the phone. So if you can't carry carryout orders, how can you carry street-side additional seating? So again, I keep trying to understand, like, what is the issue? We should all be supporting each other, we should all be building foot traffic. You know, as Bruno mentioned, he's bringing people in, the Women League of Voters are bringing people in, but I don't understand it. And I also know from the last two years that Good Grapes has served as overflow seating for Fred's during the summer months because there's frequently, it's a hotspot, 45-minute to an hour wait. So I, again, I, I don't understand the financial impact that they're experiencing. And then perhaps, and I think, I'm guessing this goes to Eric Fossey's, um, letter, uh, which I'd love to read, is that renters don't pay property taxes. Yeah, I don't understand that at all, because I pay property taxes through my rent. And my rent goes up annually, whether property taxes are increased or not. And I believe the village has held them for, what, four years, five years?
Seven.
Seven. So my, eight. So my rent is going up, even though the property taxes aren't going up. So again, I, I, I struggle with that, and I also don't think that being a, a business owner that owns their building is contributing more to businesses that rent. And if you're truly looking at the vitality of Weneka as business districts, I, I, it's a stretch for me. I have to, I, I just, I'm not grasping it, I, I just don't. And whether one buys or rents, we all picked our location. No one forced me into my location. And in fact, when both of those businesses were looking for a place to, um, purchase, the building that Bruno was in was on sale, was up for sale for years. If, if they wanted that building, they should have bought it. You know, so I struggle, obviously, with the number of complaints that are coming through here. And, um, and, this is not, and if they have not applied, I, I consider it a petty grievance, candidly. And if they haven't applied for an outdoor permit and they're just filing a grievance, it's spiteful. It's not just pet, it's spiteful.
I don't have experience here.
Okay, well, I'm just going to tell you, you're going after a business. So, and I would also add that outdoor street seating is a lot of work, much more than just sidewalk seating. So it requires additional seasonal staff. Hiring staff's just difficult, I don't care where you're at, it's always difficult, it's exponentially harder now. Um, it requires a skilled kitchen to manage the incremental orders. It requires an investment in tables, chairs, and service ware. It requires setting up and taking down tables every single night. Like, that's exciting, right? Let's move these tables and chairs again. There are logistical challenges and more. So either you choose to do that work or you don't. But we shouldn't penalize the people that are choosing to make the effort to do that and to add vibrancy that the residents rave about. So I, I'm interested in learning more about the overall grievances and what's fact and what isn't. And so, um, for the third prong, kind of which this is about, um, please don't make a process mountain out of a molehill. Right? I have a master's in business process reengineering. The process that is in place works. You might want to tweak it, but it works. So let's go through what was listed in there. First of all, the existing permit process already includes a case-by-case review. Okay? It, it already indicates the terms of use, it's for seasonal use of public streets, it already stipulates the terms and conditions of public street usage, it already has insurance requirements, and it already specifies the durations and hours of closure. So if I understand correctly, the two additional things up for consideration are a fee. I, I think that's interesting, that we've pivoted and made that section of Weneka more vibrant than any of the North Shore, and we're going to find us, but that's your guys' pers- perspective and your choice, obviously. And that the village, um, council be involved in every permit. And I would modify that to, they should be involved in when there's a written appeal to a rejected or approved application, just because you guys meet every other, that, just pure duration perspective. Um, and then one step, and I'm almost done, that should be added. And then, one step, and I'm almost done, that should be added is the village staff's validation of the grievance before incorporating them into a specific permit or policy discussion. And I would go right to, Lakeside has a potential of sixty-three parking spaces. Before that's included in something, someone should validate that, to make sure it's true or not. And then, I'm almost, since we're airing of the grievances, I'm going to air mine.
Is it about this subject?
It is. It is. It is, absolutely. I know what you think it's about. It's not.
No, I don't think anything. I'm just listening.
Okay. So, and it's going to be, so I fully expected Chestnut Court to be closed for Phase Four, right? I saw the diagram. I saw where the water pipes were. Fully expected it. And no thought whatsoever did I think it was going to be closed for almost three months, which is more than the first, exponentially more than the first three phases combined. So that's kind of new news, and you have to take that back and say, wow, I'm losing retail and sidewalk seating. Just take outdoor street seating across. That's a significant revenue impact. And then, you know, and there's zero impact, right? To me, there's no upside. And now we're here talking about a purported outdoor seating grievance that could either curtail the street seating completely, or prevent it from moving forward in a timely manner. I would just tell you, as a business owner, I'm saying enough. Like, we've, I've already got to figure out three months of what's happening. That's a lot. I know that's a done deal. But now we're going to focus on, okay, so if we get this, the executive summary says it needs to be done by the end of Phase Four. It can't be done by the end of Phase Four. If you want to get staffing and planning, we're talking April. You've got to give us some time, or me, I'm speaking for me, how to figure that out. So I don't think it's till the end of June to figure this out and then to approve if we're going to get any value out, if I'm going to get any value out of it. You know, while I only sell good grapes, from my perspective, the outdoor seating objection are sour grapes. I think it's, you know, it's not what I want to do. I don't want to do it. And I'm frustrated. I'm frustrated that after being informed of almost three months of closure, now here we are about outdoor seating. It's a lot, or it's a lot for me. So I appreciate your time. And anytime I've been in one of these meetings, the residents' preference has always taken priority, and the residents love the street closure. So I would encourage you to move forward that in a timely and economical fashion.
Thanks, Teresa.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Hi, my name is Liz Nessler. I've lived here for almost forty years. And when I first moved here, we had two restaurants that I knew of. The Depot, where I practically lived with my children, and the Indian Trail, I think it was called, which is where Bruno's place is now, I believe. I want to thank you guys for your thoughtful approach to this. I know that you're juggling a lot of balls and trying to make a lot of people happy. Weneka used to have a reputation for making it really difficult to open and run a business here. But I'm feeling like that's changed, and I'm really happy to see it.
Good.
I love street seating. I used to have to go downtown to eat. I used to have to go to Willmet. There's not much going on in Glencoe anymore. We used to be able to go to Highland Park. There's not much going on there. Weneka is a great place with great people, and I love this vibe. I love my fellow Wenetkins. And I think that outdoor seating just adds to the feeling of community. I see people who I haven't seen for many, many years. And so, thank you guys very much for doing what you're doing, and I say, go for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll jump back to the next row on this side. Terry? I almost forgot what you look like. Glad to see you back.
Thank you. I'm Teri Dason. I'm the Executive Director of the Weneka Northfield Glencoe Chamber of Commerce. And I do want to thank you all for this conversation you're having this evening. I do want you to consider the fact that the outdoor seating on Chestnut Court really creates an atmosphere that is really the best thing that Weneka has. We do have a lot of people that do come in from all over, like Bruno has said. And it does create a vibe that we've never had in our village before. We have these other fabulous restaurants, which I do not want to discredit because they have beautiful spaces now. And a lot of them do have their own outdoor seating. They planned it that way. And that was great that they did that. And when we had COVID come along, we had something else that we had to take into consideration, and those businesses were all set. They really were in a good position. But the businesses that did not have the outdoor seating, the village made this happen for them. And that was pretty amazing. And the work that you did to make that happen and make our restaurant survive was very important. And our residents have really grown to enjoy the outdoor seating. And the seating in Chestnut Court creates an atmosphere as if you're on vacation all the time. And so I just want you to consider keeping that because it really makes this part of our village a place that people want to go to. So continue that, and I support it. And I do want all the other restaurants to succeed. And we're supporting them, and they're all really important to all of us. But we want this feeling of a place that people can meet outdoors, and it's really beautiful on Chestnut Court. Thank you.
Thanks, Teri. Rocky, you got anything?
I just remember when-
Ah, if you're going to talk, you got to come up.
I just remember when Teri was talking, when we had the first music festival, and we shut down the streets. And people were walking around town with a beer in their hand, saying, this is Wenetka? That vibe was so great, that first music festival year. And that's the same vibe I got with the street closures for these restaurants. It was fun, and people said, wow, this is Wenetka.
Thank you.
You have to say one thing.
No, 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 you can't. No, no, no. Bruno, it's now your turn. Sorry. Anybody, would you like to come up?
Sure.
We all get one crack at it, Bruno.
Good night, everybody. I'm here for a little honeycomb. I probably missed most part of the meeting. But I'm here to say, like, we really need those spaces too. The past two months has been very hard. Businesses were very slow. We just started six months ago. And we really need the summer business, outdoor business. That's all I have to say.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
You're talking about the sidewalks, right?
About, I'm talking about the parking-
Those two spaces there, John?
Parking spots, yes. Thank you.
So there's another permutation of what we have to talk about tonight. Going back and, come on up.
I am Blundee from Minos. So I think probably we have much to discuss. Listen, first of all, we two are beyond grateful for the responsiveness of the council and for considering what we all have gone through to survive. And we love the fact that the restaurant scene has grown in Weneka. It's good for all of us. Getting people into the village, having Weneka become a destination. You know, we two bring in people from the city every night. We bring people in from all surrounding villages. And having Weneka be a place to come and thought of, when it's like, oh, what should we do for dinner tonight? Well, there's a lot of places in Weneka. Let's think about something there. I think it's critically important. I do, and listen, Bruno, I've known Bruno since he first came up and looked at the building. We're neighbors. I too live in the village. And this has nothing to do with any particular restaurant. It's how these things are looked at overall, and how these things are handled overall. I would like to really know what other restaurants really could benefit from street closure? What other restaurants could have streets closed? Certainly, Minos can. You can't close Merrill. You can't have everybody that goes to Walgreens, where are they going to get out? Spirit Elephant cannot. Good Grapes cannot. Is Spruce going to get shut down for Pomeroy? I can't imagine. 501, yes. I mean, it can't, are you going to shut down, you know, in front on Chestnut? I can't imagine that's a possibility. Oak Street won't be able to be shut down for, you know, the sushi or for 501. It is a very limiting thing. And I think we also have to consider, you know, how many bodies do we have, you know, as diners? Not necessarily just on Friday and Saturday nights, where, you know, we're all packed to the gills and everyone's having a great and vibrant time. But what's it like on Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night? Yes, the weather's great. Things get better. But, you know, we have, everyone has kind of, you know, limited opportunities to put butts in seats. And when there is outdoor seating granted to some and not to others, then those diners get spread out, you know, to those limited few who have those opportunities, which it seems to me that not many others have opportunities like this. It seems like Chestnut is really the only thing we're talking about, and really the only possibility. I think the bottom line to us is, you know, we believe, and we've talked to other, you know, restaurants and ownership throughout, is that it's not the village's role to shift the balance of competition. We, as business people, have sought out, you know, where can we do the kind of business we want to do? Where can we create the environment that we want to create and maximize our opportunity? And when we considered coming to Weneka, I mean, it was, it's slim pickings in terms of buildings and spaces and opportunities. So when we chose where we chose, it took an extreme investment to turn around a service station of that scale, build kitchen, build patio. And yes, we all pay, we all pay taxes. You know, we pay seventy thousand dollars a year in real estate taxes. We pay, you know, high rent. You know, so those expenses are, you know, everyone's up against those things. You know, and I look at this and go, what's the incentive for new restaurants to come into town? And what are their opportunities going to be? And is the village able to provide them with the same luxury that they're supplying those on Chestnut Court? I don't, I don't see those opportunities being there, so. And I don't necessarily know, listen, I, of course, the village and the community is excited about having outdoor dining. But they're not taking the risk to provide those things. And when you look at, you know, we want more restaurants to come to Weneka, you know, how are they going to look at this as well? Yes, I can go into the space, and I can pay the money to renovate it and build it out. But the village hasn't given me a hundred seats that I'm not paying taxes on and I'm not paying rent on. I think it unfairly shifts, you know, how we compete with one another. And like I said, we're happy to compete. We really are. But I think it has to be done fairly. And I think if we can't do something equitably, then I think we have to reconsider what it is we are doing. So that's, that's basically it.
Can I ask you one question, Glenn, as long as I got you up there? Yeah. I said it earlier, you know, market versus vibrancy. I mean, the one thing that we've heard over and over and over again in this community, since I've been in the conversation, is we want more. The Quarkus survey this year, we want more. Sure they do, yeah. And, you know, so we have this balancing act where people love the ability to go out and feel like they're in a place where something's happening and it's special. And, and that's part of our mission, is to drive this vibrancy and reinforce it as long as it's done in a tasteful and Wenetka manner. But what do you say to people when they come to you and say, you know, we love this and we want more of this? And, you know, for the, then the village, right? These six guys who vote, have to turn around and say, sorry, you know, we, we're not going to be market manipulators, and we're going to let everybody stand on their own. Which is, in my mind, contrary to what we've been trying to do for the last two years during COVID. But how do you, how would you speak to the citizens who are the ones crying for this and asking for more, given, you know, the position on unfair competition and a hundred seats more than they bargained for and things of that nature?
Well, I, you know, where else can it be done?
Well, I think, you know, we were mumbling about before, Gage.
I mean, you go downtown, they shut down Clark Street.
I mean, this is, this is-
But I understand, but, but here-
I wanted to hear him respond to that, I mean.
Yeah, but here-
No.
Have you tried to take a part of Merrill or a part of the parking lot? I mean, it's technically-
Because it crosses the street if they ever get there.
What I'm saying is, is I don't, I'm not necessarily looking for more. I'm not. I'm looking to maximize, I'm looking-
Outdoor dining. When you opened that business, it was a service station. And you had to come to this village to get all that seating that you now have. And it was the flexibility of this village, they gave you all that outdoor seating. And now you're telling us that the residents who own that street, that they can't use it in the way they want to because you got yours and they shouldn't get it.
No, ours is, ours is private, ours is private property.
Just let me finish. I agree with Teresa. You made a very serious allegation, a very serious allegation, and it deserves serious proof. You said that they're hurting your business, and you just did it again. And it's, what I heard was not facts. I heard hypothetical. Where are they going to say, I go by, like Chris, I walk this town all the time. I run this town. Your place is packed. I can't get a table there. You've got yours. Your restaurant is successful. What you're really telling the people in this village is they can't use their street that is naturally perfect for exactly what it's being used for. Because why? That's not us tipping the hand. That's, we don't work for you. We work for the residents of this-
Well, we kind of do, I mean.
Yeah, that's, I, I'm both, I'm, yeah.
I don't work for you. You may, I do not, just to be perfectly clear. This is the property of the residents of this town. And you're saying, residents, you can't use your street the way you want to? I have a real problem with that. And you're saying they're hurting your business? What are the facts that support that? Not the hypothetical questions, because I don't see it, and I have a real problem with it. And I feel like it just doesn't feel right. And I want to say this to you now, not when you're sitting over there, not when we're discussing, because I don't like that. I'd like to seriously hear your answer. Your business looks like it's doing great, and anything you ask for from this village, you'll get. So I want to hear from resident, from businesses, what do you want? Not what don't you want for your other restaurants. I have a real fundamental problem with that.
I don't necessarily know why it has to be based on what additional things we want.
You're asking for what you don't want. What do you want?
No, what we're questioning is, what do we think is fair?
You're asking what you don't want, not telling us what you want.
Have you requested the sidewalk space or additional-
We're not, like I said, I'm not, I'm not looking for more space.
You're looking for less.
I, I looked for it and found it when we set out to open a business in Weneka. And we pay for every square foot of that to do what we're doing. And yes, we have outdoor seating on our private property. And when we opened the business, we knew the competitive set. We knew what we could do, and what, based in this community. We're not downtown. There's not millions of diners. There's not endless amount of people to sit in seats.
What do you think happens to Bruno's restaurant, the value of that restaurant, now that he's created this dynamic over there? What happens to the value of that land? It goes up.
Yeah.
Who pays for that? Bruno. What are the taxes based on? The value of that property? So you're making this argument that he gets it all for free. As he's increased the value and he's created this vibe, he could eventually price himself out. That's a risk he takes on by doing that. That's what happened in full market, right? So this idea that he pays nothing is insane. It, you could, you could fire a cannon down the streets of this town before he came here. And he has single-handedly created a vibe that we never had. So this idea that he's not paying, or that he's being treated, that he's treating the village unfairly, is insane.
How are his taxes, real estate taxes, go up because of using the street?
Because as time goes on, the value of that, the rentable, the rent, the value of the rent, you think Hoffman is not going to increase his rent?
Every, every year.
And then, and then what, where are the property?
Well, sure, all, all of our rent goes up every year and all of our taxes go up every year.
He's uniquely positioned, just like a, a business on a square in the center of Europe. He isn't a uniquely valuable piece of property because of what he's done. It's gonna escalate and escalate and it's gonna keep increasing his costs. So this idea that he's not paying for it is longer. He's paying massive property taxes, massive sales taxes.
Yeah, uh, yeah, so, so is everyone else.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We're not saying you don't, you're saying he does.
Oh, no, I'm not saying he, I'm not saying at all that he's not.
Directly related to his use of.
No.
As he makes that place more valuable, his prices will go up, his rent will go up.
Like I mentioned, before COVID ever happened, Toco rented that space for the restaurant. If COVID never happened, we wouldn't be talking about using that.
No.
There's no way.
I don't disagree with that at all.
If it was to keep the businesses open, a place to eat.
He, look, he hit the jackpot. He picked a great spot at the right time.
Okay, I think we, I, I, I think, I think we need, we didn't invite you in here to beat you up, Glenn.
No, no, listen, I, but listen, I, I don't, I'm, I'm not, again, I'm.
I'm giving you a chance to say it right here, because, look, what happens in these study sessions is you make a comment and then we talk about it like you're not in the room.
No, I.
Do we have any evidence of any revenue loss?
That's what I'm asking, I, I don't see it. It is serious. It's a really serious thing to say to Teresa and to say to Bruno.
Well, you know, there, there, the reality is, is there's, there's not an unlimited amount of diners on every given night, there's not.
We've got a wall around this town, there's like eight million people around here, and he's right, people are coming from out of the city.
Same thing with Spirit Elephant, right?
Same thing with Spirit Elephant.
Are you thinking people are choosing to not go to your restaurant, to go to his restaurant because they maybe like it better? And if that's the case, that's a competition.
No, 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 listen, we, I have no, I have no qualms about what we do, the product we produce, the environment, the service we provide. I don't.
Big fan, yeah.
I don't. No, no, and, and on the busy nights, again, it hasn't, it has no effect. But, but what about, what about on a Tuesday, Wednesday night? When again, yeah, yeah.
Then why is it an issue on, i- i- if, if it's not that busy, how is that an advantage? People are gonna, they're not picking it based on.
Because we, we, we sought out, purchased, renovated, built out a space that we knew could have this much outdoor dining.
But you could say that you benefit from having a parking garage owned by the village, right?
Exactly, that's why we picked the property. That's exactly why.
This village putting in the.
Covered outdoor dining.
No, those were all absolute strategic decisions in terms of investing in that property and opening up Minos.
Throw a dart at the board, he picked a great spot. He should be rewarded for it, just like if you open a hot car.
He, he picked, he picked a spot, yes, it is a great spot. But he's then been granted and given outdoor dining that did not exist.
Yeah.
Andy, I think that the equity here, I mean, if you look at Pomeroy.
But this isn't a communist society.
No, I don't, okay, but, but, but Pomeroy, you know, they're not here, but they're investing a huge amount of money. They've invested, they're investing a huge amount of money on their outdoor space that they own.
Right.
They're putting a capital investment, that was Fosse's, that's what I got out of Fosse's letter.
Absolutely.
I didn't, I didn't really, the, the thing about the, the number of seats, eight hundred and forty thousand dollars, I mean, I, I kind of agree with you that I don't know that there's, I don't know the evidence on that that it translates into that for Bruno, but I do understand an investment in capital.
And I'm not unsympathetic to that.
And they are, and, and what, what he is saying, what Fosse's saying too, is that the village, it's a public, it's a people's streets, I get that, but we are giving them essentially that capital investment.
And should be remedied with a fee.
Well, okay, I don't know about that.
We'll get to that.
That could be, that could be the answer, I don't know the answer, but I have.
It is an unfair gift, then.
But I do have sympathy for that from a business standpoint, I really do.
Now.
But I hear your point too.
And the other thing is, is that, is that, you know, I didn't, I'm, and I didn't read Eric's letter. I mean, I've, I've had plenty of conversations with Mike Finerty and Al Steppen offline that have been very similar to that, and I've heard, I've heard this for a year now. So it's, it's, it's not a new issue and, and a new point. And sometimes what you have to do is understand that people come at these issues from different perspectives and they have, you know, a different way of analyzing their situation versus the competition. And, you know, there's a lot of different ways to compete out there. And one of them is to have superior space and superior facilities and the ability to adapt on the fly and, and.
That, that's what we invest in.
Right, and I understand.
That's what you seek as a business person, is those strategic advantages.
And so now we're kind of stuck between, well, I won't even say a rock and a hard place because really what delivered, delivered the vibrancy to this section of town was the fact that COVID came along and gave us an opportunity to see what would happen and all of a sudden it just caught on fire. And sometimes you want to stay warm, so you keep the fire going. And that's kind of what we're seeing here is that the community now, and I'll be honest, I, I have never eaten at Bruno, I've never, because I can't get into the damn place, okay? And, and I don't want any favors, but. Well, maybe you need the other side of the street, I, I mean, the point is, is that people love this atmosphere and they love the environment. And as we continue as a, as, as a village, as, as a village body to enhance these things, there's gonna be more and more of this stuff that comes up because people love what we're doing and they want to do more. Wait till we get to Hubbard Woods and you start to see the transformation up there. It's gonna change the way people perceive that and it's gonna draw more and more people in. You know, I, for ten years, people would say, you know, don't dump money into sidewalks and lights because it's not gonna change anything. Well, lo and behold, you create a place people want to be and all of a sudden, they're there.
Completely agree.
And, and we're hoping that the, this sort of progress occurs as we can get up to Hubbard Woods and start to transform that area as well and make it a place where people want to go and even out the competition. And maybe you will, you will find over time that that slice of Merrill on your side of the street would, would sit down another twenty tables or so and we'll have to figure out how to protect the, protect the diners while they're there. But those are really high-class problems as we move through this, so. But I respect your opinion, you know, everybody comes at it from a different angle and that's why we're, that's why we have study sessions with open microphones, so we can hear from everybody.
Right.
And then at some point in time, we gotta bring it back here and sort this whole thing out and try to come to some agreement, because these are the guys that are gonna make, make the decision, so.
Well, we'd like to be.
And we're passionate, as you can tell.
Included in, in, in future discussions on how we do this.
Definitely.
You know, because I think it is important to see, you know, the perspectives of, you know, those that have looked at and invested in and, and planned and wanted to grow a business in this community. And especially ones that are in such high demand, you know?
And the investment we made.
And we made, that's absolutely.
And for the future investor too, when there is another restaurant coming, so what the village will say, no, I cannot have you as a restaurant, why, otherwise you ruin other people's business. So the way you say, we, we cannot have a more restaurant.
No, it's, I, I, it, no, we, we want, we. No. We, we, we want more, we want more restaurants. You know, it's, it's not, we, we do want more restaurants, but we think it should be, these are, these are private businesses that make decisions and it shouldn't be based on the village making business decisions that affect private businesses.
I, I get where you're going, I mean, if I can finish my statement, and I appreciate everyone's being here to defend and talk about their business. We, there, there is a difference because I think, let's start with a commitment we made to making, bringing in and attracting these types of businesses. And the anchors that are being put down for restaurants in this village that have, that have long-term viability. And that wasn't the case before. I think they, they just didn't invest in the food, they didn't invest in menu, didn't, a lot of things. I think this, this, these trustees, as they sit down, are very clear on, we have no favors here. We want to try and do what's fair and what's right. I, I do understand where you're coming from, I understand where Andy's coming from, how we, how do we make this fair but still keep the vibe of this, of this community?
Absolutely.
And that's a hard thing to do. Not, as I say to my kids, not everyone's gonna be happy, but we're trying to be as, it may not be completely equal, but it will be equitable of how we do business and how we, what decisions we make, so. I, I really appreciate your point of view, where you're coming from, Teresa as well, and we'll try and do this as fairly as we can.
That's the whole idea.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks Glenn, really appreciate it. Rocky, you've already spoken, is anybody else, would you like to speak? You're the last one standing, so. We'll be nice, we promise.
Well, I look, my name is Dawn Raff, I've lived in Oneeka for twenty-five years. And what I've noticed is, in that time of, you know, Hubbard Woods has its area, this west, Oneeka has its area, Village Green, they eat that side. And so everybody gets their turn. So Minos gets concerts in the park in the summer and everybody goes over and gets pizza. But the village, or the middle of the town, the Chestnut Court's never been used. It's just, it was just nice to see it used and it's just for summer and I think it should continue.
Great. That was easy. Thank you. I was thinking that we might want to read, read the letters into, but I, all the trustees have, have had the benefit of reading them, I assume? So I don't think we need to tread over, tread over that ground and, and I think Glenn hit the high points of, of Eric's letter and.
Just as a point of reference, is that available for the residents to see or?
Yeah.
Yeah, so just because I think Teresa said she didn't have an opportunity to read it.
I wonder why I'm so fired up, I want him to know.
No, but is that available on the website?
No. No, it's not available on the website, but there are public documents that can be shared.
Okay.
We'll get you a copy, Teresa, but I, I, I mean, facilitating debate between merchants doesn't make a lot of sense, you know, I mean.
You don't want to create merchant.
No. Everybody's got a different perspective and I know we all look at, look at things through our own personal lenses and sometimes they align and sometimes they don't, so. So, okay, now I'm gonna bring it back up here and let you guys hash it out. So what are you thinking?
I'll start a little bit. I, I think one of the things that Andy wasn't getting clear with Glenn. Glenn, I think it's Glenn from Minos, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Shows that property, developed the property.
Whoa.
And, and, and paid for all of his dining to be on his land, all right? And there's a tax bill with that, which everyone pays taxes for their share of the real estate piece of land that's actually planted.
I totally get that.
All right.
And it's a big investment.
Totally. So, and I think what he's trying to say is like, on a Tuesday, let's say maybe it's slow, and I don't know the exact numbers, let's pretend Toco has fifty seats inside. Well, if he's got another twenty-five outside, he's now got seventy-five seats of people sitting or eating. Where on a typical Tuesday, those twenty-five on the street maybe would not have been there and would have went to maybe fill his restaurant up more or another restaurant in town.
That is where I'm getting lost. I don't understand that.
We have no proof of that.
No, no, I, here's why I don't understand it. If it's not a busy night, where are the people coming from?
No, no, busy meaning, i- if he didn't have the street seating.
Yeah.
The inside of his restaurant could be full.
Right.
All right? Those extra twenty-five seats outside that people are sitting would be somewhere else maybe.
But is Minos also full right now at this point on a Tuesday? No.
I, I'm just.
But I was wondering with the.
He's saying that some nights.
And then there's also, they issue some people choosing to go to the extra and if that's the case, that's not our choice to be saying which.
But they wouldn't go there if the streets were, the city wasn't free.
We have no facts or evidence of that at all.
But there's also, there's also times when I was eating at Toco outside and nobody was inside.
Yeah.
So there's also that opportunity curve decision that was, same thing at Minos.
I'm not, I'm not at all against any of this, as in my son.
They have no facts.
But to use the street, it's not gonna be cheap. It's not free rent. In other words, let's pretend I just took the Toco building.
Yeah.
I built four kitchens inside, two seats inside. I spend a thousand dollars a month rent.
Well, that's.
Oh, all my extra seating is gonna be on the street in the summer.
Your street is a perfect weather.
That's the opposite, very, very far opposite, but that could happen.
If, if we decided to shut down a street because we thought it made sense and our residents wanted it and somebody was smart enough to locate their business there, God bless them.
And I'm okay closing a street down.
I mean, that's how this thing works.
Just has to be a, just has to be a well-thought-out process of how you come up with the cost to close that street.
I, I, two things I, I am a little bit upset about is when we're saying that somehow we're getting involved in the market because there's many things in this, you know, as I said, Hubbard Woods Park was revitalized. There's a bocce ball that's lighted at night, so people as they're waiting twenty, thirty minutes to get into Minos can go to the park. With the concerts we're mentioning. Pre-village, so there's all those things where I think what's important is when we look at policies that they're neutral on their face, they're not benefiting one property owner over another.
Totally agree.
And I think when we talk about how we try to kind of address concerns of making sure that a certain area of the village that has been underutilized and under, has not had the vitality that we wanted to, we should have the flexibility to say that, you know, that area, Chestnut Court, is different than, as it says, Indian Hill is gonna be different than Hubbard Woods, right? We should have the flexibility of looking at these areas discreetly and not being, you know.
So Tina, would we, would we, would we look at Little Honeycomb and say, you know what, those two or three spots outside, we'll, we'll give those up?
All day long.
Okay, all day long.
I don't think you can complain in equity unless you've made a request that's been denied on equity.
Okay.
But no requests have been made.
Would we, would we do that? Would we give up alley space? I don't know if we own the alleys or whatever.
Not, not, in my mind, not for free.
Okay, but would, you know, would we do, if someone came in, Liz, if, what's, what's the one up in Hubbard Woods on Green Bay?
Merrill?
No, no, across the street, the, the sandwich place. Town and Oak, Town and Oak. If they wanted to use the alley behind, make it a nice Italian light kind of thing.
Could they do that?
Well, these are all hypotheticals because none of those people who rejected.
They're not hypotheticals because we want to treat everyone fairly.
Sure.
We would, we would entertain Little Honeycomb to take over those spots. I agree with that, I agree with that. But I don't think we can just say here, you know, Chestnut Court, you're in for free or whatever.
I'm not saying that, I think we develop a policy that's neutral and it's application.
And we've got a recommendation about what that looks like. I mean, I think we need to have a process for when those requests come. I think the reality is, and you all can prove me wrong, come and ask us for something, right? You're not gonna get denied. And most of, people haven't been paying attention. Well, if, if it's gonna get denied, you're gonna, you're eager for, but.
Right.
Come and ask, I, I don't actually see us denying any reasonable request to bring restaurants into this town because that's what people in this town want.
So would we see an application for Little Honeycomb for those two or three parking spots? Would we see those at the council level or not?
Well, that's, you know, that's, that's right there.
I think that's, we have to focus on the policy is how it's handled.
But, but, but the issue is, is I'm not so sure that this is the sort of thing that I want plaguing our agenda on a regular basis.
No, I think it's a miss.
We have a lot of work to do anyway. And it's nice for staff to say, oh, let council decide, sorry, Kristen. But there is a tension to that too, that, you know, we have a lot of work to do here as well. And maybe in, in the event that staff denies a request and they wanted to appeal it to council.
I like that idea, I thought that was a great idea.
I haven't, but Chris, having, having these things, and, and granted now there'll, there'll be two, maybe three, but, but if we agree to this, which I actually think we should, but if we agree to this, we should make it very clear to the other restaurants in town that we are open for business.
For sure.
For reasonable requests, you know, for public, you know, we have, if you want to use the parking garage, you know, we should be open to that. I mean, if they want to have an event up there.
For dining, not for storing your, your other stuff.
Well, that's right.
No, but if they wanted to have a barbecue fest or like a music, you know, I think that those would be things we'd be willing to entertain, right?
Differentiate between a special event of limited duration versus.
Right.
A street or an alley that's gonna be more routine use.
Correct.
And we're set up on, you know, for that, for that, first, that is important to you. But we're trying to draw the line between three, reasonable use of the sidewalk versus outside.
Right.
Or an alley. And what was proposed here is trying to be neutral and also a commitment to making concessions. Certainly without the feedback as to how you want to concede something. Now, typically a license agreement can show up, it has shown up at the council, they've gone for hometown, right? Because the way they wanted to configure their rest to do it, which hasn't happened yet. But a license agreement is just a way to kind of apply that for a specific period of time or certain conditions, it's equitable to anybody who wants to make something else available.
With the recommendation of the fee, because you're taking. With the recommendation of the fee, because you're taking, uh.
But I guess I.
That's taking public space, and they're not getting something from the government for free, other than.
I'd push, I'd push back on, a little bit on what you were saying, Bob, which, and everyone's saying, which is, and I do understand where you're coming from. They made an investment in this community, here's what we're going to do, here's what we're going to spend, here's what we can afford. To go in the garage means, you know, I got to open an extra kitchen, I got to hire twenty more staff, and that just becomes, you're saying, if you want to compete, you're going to have to continue to ratchet up expenses that you didn't think you were going to have. And that's, that, and, but that's a.
Get free space.
But, but.
He didn't want to ratchet it up.
But, but all, but all, but all free spa, you know, exactly.
All space is not created equal. That is, it, it's a lucky, it's. But, but he just happened, you know, it was, he luck, you know, he just, not nice space, but it was fortuitous, to say the least, that we opened it up.
On the policy record.
But, and, and a hundred, if there's a hundred, I do understand. On the key dining times, six-thirty to, to eight-thirty, if there are a hundred people dining, you each have fifty seats, but somebody then opens up twenty-five in the street more than that, because they're fortuitous. Those people on those key dining will shift to the restaurant. I mean, while I love Italian, I love Minos food too, if somebody's open, I'm going there. And that's why I understand where that's coming, so I get it. So, I think it is just finding a, a space in the middle.
Before we get too far into the woods, under policy consideration is the fee. And I, one of my suggestions would be, take a restaurant, I'm just going to throw Toco out there because it's on top of mind. What's his yearly rent and his taxes? How many seats does he have in his restaurant, including his outdoor side seating? Divided by his total rent, that's the cost of seat in the street. To make it even for all the other restaurants.
But I, so this is.
For Minos who paid.
But why are you looking at the full balance sheet and look at all the money that we're getting, that we weren't getting before?
Right. So, I'm concerned about trying to make it even for businesses because we pay.
I'm not making it even.
No, just because we pay an economic development person to go find businesses to bring them in.
And to buy property, not to use free streets.
Well, no, but I could see one of the existing restaurants to take that to the logical conclusion, that's not fair. You're bringing in competition that's going to take butts out of our seats, so where does it end? I don't think we can get into this discussion of trying to make it even or fair for businesses. We're trying to create a, a vibrant community in response to where our residents and the, uh, people who vote in this community want. I mean, you could say it's not fair to go out and find other restaurants, but that's what we know.
No, no, but that's, but they're, they're buying defined spaces.
That's common land.
This is a very, to your point, it's a very unusual situation now, because they have a very unusual space that they get great benefit from.
Chestnut is very unique, and if any restaurant that had a problem with it came to us and said, you know what? We'd like some space on Chestnut, and we'd like to, we'd like to use it as our overflow seating area, and we'd like to use it this way or that way. I would say, bring us that request.
Well, that will never go through me without a fee. There's no way.
I'm not talking about the fee right now. Glenn, I appreciate that we.
But if Fellas turned over, or if somebody else turned over and became a restaurant.
I think Tina's point's correct, though, which it also was brought up by, she slapped already, that said something to the effect of, there are concerts in the park that bring an additional group of people into town that overflow potentially in theory to Minos.
Overflow, not using their space for heat.
No, no, I'm saying, wrong word then.
Okay.
People going from the park to Minos.
In the queue.
In theory, right?
We can't try and make things all even.
We can't say that, okay, Bruno, we're going to create a concert in, at Dwyer Park so that you can have that same benefit of people moving over. So, where does it end? Should we not have Liz soliciting new restaurants into town?
It all has to end on property ownership of what you own. Bottom line.
But you could say, I mean, if, I mean, Minos, I mean, I'm sorry to keep saying this, but you've made an incredible investment and you eat there all the time.
Same blood, yeah.
But they could say, hey, you're trying to bring in more businesses into town that is going to continue to dilute this finite number of diners.
I don't think he's totally saying that. He's all up for more restaurants. Just make sure that they, they put the same amount of money on the same amount of land and not give free space.
So, we can talk about.
Like I said, Toco bought, rented that, that restaurant.
Right.
Totally happy, opened a restaurant.
Sure.
Contained to a sidewalks and inside.
Yeah.
Never thought of free space in the street. Covid came.
But why is this, why is there so much with it being free?
Maybe it was a, trying to.
Covid comes along, we open it up because we're trying to help the restaurant. I go back to my notes. I mentioned, what's going to happen to these restaurants after Covid? They're going to expect it. Here we are. It should not be expected.
Why is that bad?
It is bad because they're not paying. They're, they're making more profit with less investment.
But why is that bad?
It's not right.
Why isn't that, why?
Okay, then Minos.
Why is that not like the most amazing thing happening on the North Pole right now?
Then Minos should come to us with an application for two-hundred more feet of the park.
Yes.
And use it.
That's what we're saying, he's more than welcome to do that.
But, but that changes his.
And free.
But that changes his.
And then, you know what, better yet, cut your restaurant in half, lease out the other one to someone else.
But that changes his investment, that maybe they didn't, weren't playing to pay when they bought, on a, on a level playing field, they can compete.
We haven't raised taxes in eight years. Winnetka's not hurting for.
Cook County has.
We're doing really well.
Cook County has, yeah.
And now what's happening is, people actually want to live here. Like, you walk around, it's vibrant, and it's not costing us a dime. He said, I'm doing all the work.
So, do you?
I don't understand why we're talking about charging them money for doing something we could never do before. Council after council.
Because he can never do it before either.
Set down and said, let's do everything exactly the same way. Why don't we have anything different?
Then why, why don't we close Lincoln for Dakin Folder, for Little Honeycomb? Any other restaurants that want to open down Lincoln, why don't we close it?
I would consider it. That's what we're saying, even though no one's asked.
There's no way in hell this is going to happen.
Why?
So, but I think, but I think, I mean, we, I think this concept is, you know, coming up with a neutral policy and a, and a process that doesn't carve our agenda. And then I think we can talk about whether, whether it's this very convoluted sort of calculation, or if it's just looking at a reasonable fee for the use of anything outside the curb.
Okay.
And then that makes, and that is, I think, the discussion, right?
Right, and I'm going to let you lead it off, because now we're going to figure out whether we're going to, whether we are looking for some compensation for this potential use or not. So, let.
And before we get that far.
Let's figure that one out first.
Hang on.
So, compensation or none? That's the subject on. No, 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 we're not going back.
Building code.
I'm running the meeting.
Number of bathrooms.
I'm running the meeting. We are going to figure out first if there's a fee or no fee. That's what we're talking about. I'm not going to worry about public health or all that other stuff.
There's a fee.
Should we ask for, for a fee? And, and, and what would you propose or not, and why wouldn't you propose that? Knowing that we have intense pressure on our budget, and we're going to have to raise taxes. I mean, the eight-year run, folks, is pretty much over, I'll tell you right now, so. You know, just understand, we can't, we can't keep pulling rabbits out of our hat when inflation rates are going sky-high right now. It's going to happen.
We can sell Green Bay Road.
It's going to happen, and, and the more importantly, as a, as an owner in real estate, and I, and I own retail real estate, is I would never own property in Cook County because I know the burden it puts on tenants. So, you go out to DuPage County, I'm paying three bucks a square foot for taxes, all in. You come out here to Winnetka, what is it, twelve, thirteen bucks now? Okay? So, the burden isn't coming from us, of course, but it is coming from Cook County and the other taxing agencies that haven't been as frugal and as, and as understanding of, of what it's like to live in Winnetka and pay these crazy taxes. So, Tina, I'm going to let you lead it off on the fee conversation.
No, I, I, I guess first, before we get into that conversation, Ben or Liz or Kristen, do we know? Do we know, I mean, are other municipalities looking at, say, the curb thing was free, but now if you, you know, the sidewalk part was free, now if you go into the right of way, does that, is a burden on, you know, and it is public space? Is that like a line that other municipalities have drawn? And is there precedent for it, I guess is what I'm looking for.
Right. And, and the sidewalk already is right of way, so you know.
I know that.
Yes.
I am a real estate buyer.
Trustee, gentlemen, to answer your question, yes, and actually, the, there's a wide range of fees for using the sidewalk. We have a no-fee permit. Some municipalities charge up to fifty dollars for, you know, just. Flat, flat fifty-dollar fee with your permit. So, there's that, we have no fee. And, and some municipalities charge per square foot for a street. Others are doing the tax, as I said, in Arlington Heights, and others are still figuring it out, so.
It seems like the tax would be kind of contrary to what we're trying to do to create a vibe, but, um, who does the square footage? Is that what Chicago has gone to, or did they, are they still waiving all things?
Glencoe is figuring out whether it's going to be square footage. Park Ridge was having this conversation as well, and their community development department was going to bring some options to them as well, so.
What about like Evanston and High Road, or other places that have a lot of restaurants, but also not a lot of public space? Those narrow, those are narrow sidewalks.
Yeah, you know, in Cary is an example, they have a street that's closed, and they don't charge anybody. And they, the, they put out festoon lights, and they put out tables, and it's open for everybody. It's this idea of creating a plaza, and then it's not for specific businesses. There are businesses that are in front of it, but others are encouraged, I think they're, the idea of overflow seating, so you can't make reservations, you can't take that area, but anyone can sit there. There's, there's a lot of different ways to cut it.
Interesting. Well, I mean, if, if you're going to say that, uh, in my opinion, I think that it's reasonable to look at a fee for the part in the street, because it does take away this issue potentially of a government gift, right? I mean, it just is clear, everybody's given the sidewalk for free, we could put that up for discussion, but I think that's going to have a chilling effect of what we're trying to create. But then if there's, you know, I think that once you go into the street, and, and if it's, you could distinguish between certain, you know, one-time events, or like the bookstall events may be different than every day, um, you know, you could try and distinguish between that. But I would be in favor of a fee.
May I be too?
I would think about a square footage. It seems fair to me. I, I, when I was just in Charleston, um, and I was in North Carolina, they are doing, uh, for business, um, they seem to be doing that sort of thing as well, from what I gather.
John?
Let's go around the other side, everyone knows how I feel.
I want to know how you calculate the fee, though.
How to calculate the fee? I would take the total rent of the space, including real estate taxes.
Which is private information.
Well, they want free space, they get to share some of it, and they could be sharing privately maybe, somehow. Took maybe to establish a base fee for everyone then, okay? Take the number of seats they have in the restaurant, including the outside sidewalks, if you want to do that.
Okay.
Because I have no problem using the sidewalks for free or fifty-dollar application fee, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Take your total cost for the year.
Yeah.
Divide it by the number of seats, right?
Yeah.
Divided by three-hundred-and-sixty-five days, what's the cost a day to have a seat? And how many seats do you want in the street, and how many days?
What was your total cost a year, Kristen? Total rent, total rent.
Total rent and taxes.
Establish an average rule.
Yeah, you could get some.
On square footage.
Yeah, you would want to see like a different price to a different restaurant or a street.
No, no. We want to establish a fee.
So, you're saying like.
So, call it thirty bucks.
Like a median, median, median footage.
Median rent?
Yeah.
Right, maybe it's thirty bucks a square foot, thirty-five.
It's less convoluted.
Right, okay.
Well, it's less individualized.
You're on a square footage, like.
No, I'm on a per-seat.
What, per-seat for Toco versus per-seat for Great?
If you got, well, until you see the number.
Or per-seat for everybody.
Let's just pretend.
That's what we're doing right now.
How, right.
You go tell your neighbor that you're shutting it down.
How many square feet is your restaurant? Three thousand?
Uh, two thousand four hundred square feet.
All right, twenty-four hundred, now these are all fake numbers.
Call it thirty bucks.
Call it thirty bucks, seventy, sorry. Yeah, right, right, right. Twenty, twenty-four hundred times twelve, times thirty, eight-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand a year. How many seats do you have inside and the sidewalk?
Eighty.
How many seats inside?
No, generally, eighty bucks is an annual, right?
Yeah, eight-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, ten year.
Seventy, seventy-five feet?
I think, outside, twenty-four hundred.
It gets messy when you're trying to.
Times thirty.
Between indoor seats and outdoor seats.
Yes.
Seventy-two thousand.
Yes, there you go. That makes me nervous, seventy-two, you times twelve.
Sorry, seventy-two thousand. Twenty, how many seats inside?
We don't want to do what you're running from, bro.
No, no, don't tell us, please don't tell us.
No, how many?
No, 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 no.
How many seats inside?
Oh, the number of seats are seventy-seven.
All right, divided by seventy-seven. Nine. It's even higher.
La, 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 I did.
Nine-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars a seat per year.
Right.
Which, you're getting fifteen, you're doing a seat, what you're doing is a seat tax.
Divided by three-sixty-five and then multiply.
Only for the street. You could convert that to square footage.
Are you going to per-read a bag based on hours?
You should do square footage outside, not inside.
Right, months and hours, right.
Because you can't times it by the seat, because it's.
John.
People are going to come and it's going to be a beautiful day outside and maybe completely empty outside and just eat outside.
Okay, how much is that per-seat? Nine-thirty-four, you said?
Nine-thirty-five.
Nine-thirty-five. Divided by three-sixty-five, times one-twenty.
What's the one-twenty?
The four months that you have the availability.
What about when they raid?
No, 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 no.
Three hundred dollars, it's not three hundred dollars.
That sounds about right.
No.
Yeah. Per-seat.
Oh, per-seat.
It's a formula possibility.
Per-season.
Which is a big number when you start to think about it, that's.
And it's, it's like renting another space.
Do you take that three hundred for the outdoor seats that they have?
No, just the ones on the street.
That's what I'm saying, the outdoor, you take that three hundred and then you, that's, because there may be some, just in the street, because there may be some on the sidewalk.
So, if they have fifty more seats outside, times three-hun, three hundred, that's the number. Because that's what they would be paying in rent if they had a restaurant that they're paying rent for.
That's fifteen thousand bucks.
But I don't think we're trying to make that, but this is.
John, that's not going to work.
That's not going to get past me, so that's fine.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I want to tell you, when people sit outside, they're not going to sit inside.
Right.
You cannot calculate like another rent. So, you have to calculate it, you know, in a different way. In Chicago, as an example, I used to have a virtual in Chicago, under a seat outside, I was paying seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year. So, anyway, and.
In Chicago.
Okay.
I know, but Winnetka, considering what I did to, for Winnetka, you should put in consideration, if it was not Toco, Winnetka wasn't like, like this now.
But we, whatever we do, Bruno, has to be even across the board.
I, I appreciate it, whatever you do, if you're giving a street.
Because Glenn went out and dropped, and dropped a ridiculous amount of money on, on Hubbard Wood Motors and transformed the street.
They both transformed.
Okay, that, Bruno, that's enough now. See you later, good night. I know.
Thank you.
That's unnecessary. Okay, so we heard what John has to say. Bob, what's, what are you thinking?
One more thing on the fee, though. I guess not the fee. This whole thing has to be part of the twenty-forty plan and investigation of the whole. I guess not the fee, this whole thing has to be part of the twenty forty plan and investigation of the whole.
Well, I'm not gonna let this thing go down the road for another two years while we figure that out, so.
I think we can get a formula. We don't have to do that right now.
My question is use virus, cause I don't rest in hotbed, so.
No, 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 we're not, we're not going there, Teresa.
But, again, I, and I wanna keep the streets open, I wanna keep the street open. I mean, I, I think we got too much going on over there, so I'm all, I'm all for that, I, and this is not Minos over Good Grapes or Good Grapes over Toco, but keep Chestnut Court open is great.
You mean, open for outdoor dining?
Outdoor dining, yeah, so I, I, I don't wanna shut it down, I like option three, I like to open it.
What do you think about the fee structure?
Well, I think we can come up with a fee structure, but I don't know that we're gonna do that right here. But, the, the thing that I really think we need to do is, is the policy, there should be a policy statement. The policy statement is that we are open for business, we want vibrant, we wanna limit to restaurants. I mean, I was thinking, you know, what about a retailer that wants to use the street, I don't know. But, and that we are open for business and open to consider all sorts of permutations of this. You know, and it, again, I use a little Honeycomb, it's right around the corner from us, you know, we can accommodate a couple parking spots.
Mm-hmm.
A good three of them, so, I think the policy statement is the key thing here. Um, I think open, keeping that open, that's just too good of an arrangement down there for this village to limit that, so I think we gotta keep that open. It's our defeat, it's reasonable, I mean, whether it's tied to the rent or something that, not fifty bucks, but something that means something. And encourage Minos and others, you know, to think outside the box and other ways that we can help. And we, and we wanna do it, that's what I would do with this policy.
Okay, Kim?
He said it perfectly, appropriately, and that's exactly what I agree with. I love going to all the restaurants, I think they're, they're awesome. They're all have opportunities for expansion in one way or the other, if they want to apply for it, I think we should consider each fee of this policy. Again, I do not think we're gonna come up with a formula right now, so for a fee, but I think a fee probably makes sense. But yeah, ask and you shall receive, I guess, is what Andy says, and I, I agree. The more the merrier for more seating.
I didn't bring my phone. Andy, I'm sorry, I'm trying to do math while we're talking.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with Bob, I agree on the policy statement. On the fee, I would say we should avoid fee. And we should keep in mind what the purpose is. We, this budget that we operate on, any fee that you talk about is incidental. Just so everybody knows, the way this village runs, it's property taxes. It's the, it's, it's not even, all, all other numbers are almost irrelevant. And so, anything we do that increases the value of the property here, that's the smart play. Every other move to try to nickel and dime it that would diminish the dynamic of the town, that would undermine the value, is foolish. And not only that, that, that property value issue, that goes directly in the pocket of every resident in this town, okay? So it's not just an issue of the village budget, when we make smart moves and we create a dynamic downtown, our residents make more money. They can retire, they can sell their house when they're ready to move to Florida or whatever they wanna do. That's the smart move in this town. Any nickel and diming fee is foolish in comparison to that goal. And when we look at our competitors, and we should view them as competitors, the other towns, there's no reason for a restaurant to pick Winnetka if you're gonna charge some massive fee. And there's no reason to charge a fee that's not significant, then it's just annoying, right? And do you wanna be the resident that when people pay their, their restaurant bill, there's a village of Winnetka like, how do you do kind of on there? That is not the message we've been trying to create in this town for, as long as I've been doing this job. And so, let's keep our eye on the big picture. The reason good things are happening in this town now is because we're not doing things exactly the damn way we've always done things.
Mm-hmm.
And who's creating the change? It's people that are coming from out of the city. And I get real riled up whenever people knock Chicago, cause the only reason I live here is because of that city, just to be perfectly honest. And we should all be grateful to live next to that city. And, and it's the people coming out of Chicago that are making this town really extraordinary. And if we don't appreciate that, then, you know, we need to take a step back and really think about, how is it this amazing thing has happened over here? It's not because of any of us, this wasn't even on our radar, okay? It's because of Bruno, it's because of Teresa, it's because of Glenn, as I'm yelling at you and I apologize for being so brutal about that. I love your restaurant, you know, spit in my food, but, you know.
Give me his reservations, please.
But it's, it's, people are coming here with ideas, and that's why I say, don't tell us what you don't want. That's all this town has been looking at for the last god knows how many years. Tell us what you want and that's, let's figure out a way to do that. So, I, I, I like the option number three, but I would do it the way Teresa said. If we say no, you appeal it. And that addresses the equity issue. You think you've been denied something? Appeal it, you'll get a fair hearing.
Trustee Kreip, just for clarification, so the sidewalk, the outdoor dining for sidewalk is, is, almost ninety-five percent of that is done administratively? It's still placed on your agenda for approval on consent?
And the license agreement, we would have to.
It would kinda be the same thing, but it would be as easy as, as, as easy as possible.
And we keep it lean, we keep it competitive, and we send a message that Winnetka is open for business, and if you are a restaurant and you wanna do amazing things, you come here. It's that simple. Any message that's inconsistent with that is like shooting yourself in the foot.
And, and to back down on my previous comment, I hope you know I was busting your chops a little there, Rob. But, you know.
Let's do it.
Comes with the territory, right? But, we can always pull an item off the consent agenda if anybody has a heartburn or they don't like what they're doing, but, you know, so that's how it would work well. And then if we pull it off the consent agenda and reject it, then it goes back to a potential appeal. That way, at least staff has cover to know that they aren't hanging out to dry on these decisions and somebody comes back at them later on saying, what the hell are you thinking?
Yeah.
Right, so at least you've got the cover to do, your staff has the cover to do what they need to do.
And it's transparent.
And, right, and it's still out there in, in the public and we can see it. And if you don't like it, then we pull it and then debate it one-off.
I like that.
So, does that work? So, I'm hearing fee, fee.
Bigger, bigger fee.
Oh, I'm sorry. Don't mind me, I'm just, you know. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to keep score because you might be the tiebreaker here.
Oh, am I? P P P?
Well, can I throw another option in, this may be too hard for you to understand? How about only, like, if a June is your fee, only on the days used? So like, if he gets a June where it's raining every night.
Too lucky to keep track of that.
Well, there's ways, I mean, I don't know, but that's.
And then you're collecting after the fact.
So, I guess I'd look at this, I do agree with Andy about nickel and diming. Everywhere you go, you know, and.
We don't wanna be that government.
And seeing, in the city of Chicago, I hate to say it, you know, I love the city too, but boy, you know what's going on now, but, the nickel and, the fees, they're, they're picking people apart. And I want every restaurant here to be wildly successful. If they make a little more extra, God love them, it'll get more people in here. I think we do have to be cognizant of, to what John said, is these people bought a business based upon what they thought was, when the game, when it was a level playing field, the seats were the seats. That said and done, what is done for the village overrides my thinking to keep the vibrancy going, gotta do it. The, if there are issues on Tuesday and Wednesday, maybe we limit what Bruno's doing, maybe it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And, and that makes it a more level playing field when everyone, no, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, everyone has a better chance of filling those seats no matter what. I'm not sure that's where I wanna go either, but I just think we have to look at competition in general that, that, that makes the other shop owners happy. Because if I'm buying another restaurant, unless I'm kicking Bruno out and buying his space and we can put another fifty tables out a night, there isn't the same, I, I get it, everyone can try and do a little bit more, but I think we have to be, do not turn a blind eye to the competition of other, other vendors here. But, but I'm, I'm, if we're gonna do a fee, it should be limited and, and just so there's something there in place. But I, I really would, don't wanna make it onerous in any of the restaurants going forward.
So we don't have to meet in the mind on fee?
Well.
Did, when, when Bruno was speaking, he, he said, charge me a fee.
Yeah.
He's making a lot more money with no more overhead.
I think he's expecting, I mean, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but that's what I heard.
Yeah, and then I, and then, and then, and then it seems that the major objection, I mean, putting lights out aside, right, because they've got a parking issue. The other two restaurants that objected seem to be primarily objecting to the fact that they got, he got that additional space without a fee, right? Is that fair?
That's what we've heard, yeah, so.
Makes sense.
The, the terms, but any hours is gonna be important too.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's, closing the street is not about its purchase or parking and traffic, so it's part of that conversation.
Just with this idea in, in a little bit of perspective, I was on this council when those restaurants opened. And, and when, when Fred's wanted to open up and they had these ideas, we want a nicely streetscaped area. Who was it that came up with the money to make that happen? Right, we did, it was a lot of money. So this idea that we've somehow like tipped the scales is bogus. We haven't, in fact, you could make an argument, we dumped actual money over there that we haven't dumped over there. And, and we keep doing it and we'll keep doing it. So, I, I just, I, I do get a little annoyed at this idea that somehow we're favoring one over the other. You pick your location, things happen, you get hit by a tornado, things fall into the sea, there's a lot of things that can happen, COVID can happen. But this idea that we're doing anything but trying to give our all to every restaurant that comes here, it's bonkers.
Seems like a crazy thought. What if, does, I have crazy ideas sometimes. What if?
Exactly.
They're the best idea.
Hoffen owns Toco, right? Hoffen bought, across the street, including the street, just the actual property, and gives you the easement to use it on the days you need it. And then now they're paying the real estate taxes on it.
You wanna give Hoffen realty, control.
You asked for it.
You just killed him.
Well, they're paying real estate taxes on it and own the land.
It's a big one, Elizabeth. You are going to give away one of the most, you are going to sell one of the most.
No, no, they can make no changes to it, they can use for outdoor dining, brick paved.
Why would they want? Sharks jumped the.
If they went outdoor seating and you have to pay for it somehow.
Okay. It's an interesting idea.
So I know the phone calls I'm gonna get from them.
You can create a land and keep it for this use.
But why doesn't that be limited, that just costs?
It wouldn't be.
I, I, I guess the bigger issue is, and, and, and it comes out Andy in your comments, but why is it, is it important to monetize this opportunity?
Yes, because, let's be real, I, I wanna come into Winnetka and open a restaurant. I'm gonna find the smallest space possible and I'm gonna come back and say, oh, I need the street closed Tuesday through Saturday, because I wanna put my hundred seats outside.
But then it goes to staff and staff says, no, that's, that's a, a business.
We gotta have a pretty darn good, you know, review statement.
Cause outside is raining, you can't be closing the street now.
You're gonna have two seats inside and twenty outside, that's not fair.
We would've, if someone would've come to us five years ago, if, if someone would've come to us five years ago with what's happening there now and said, hey, would you like Winnetka to look like this? Give us a million dollars and we'll make it happen. We would've done that all day long. The only reason you're talking about a fee now is because of the investment that man made and the risk he's taking.
On his own property.
And the work he puts in every night on our property, setting that thing up, live music, that's benefiting the whole town. You don't even have to, you just walk around, you listen to the music. Like, we would've taken that deal all day long. It reminds me like when my wife married me and I was broke, I had no money, I was in law school. And I am not a prize on so many different levels. And for whatever reason, she marries me, I graduate from law school, I make far more money than I deserve to make. I end up with these kids and now I should say, well, now that's all worked out, you should start paying me. What?
That's what I do.
It's like, I hit the freaking jackpot and now, because she had the poor judgment to take on that risk, I'm gonna be like, no, that's crazy. But you, you prefaced it by saying it might be crazy.
Well, I do think there is a slightly difference in that we're a government, right? And so there's this concern about government action, right? And I think that's what we have to look at. I don't have, I, I don't have an objection to a fee to try to equal, you know, to make sure that government is not tipping the balance for something that, you know, but, I can be convinced otherwise.
But you just heard the formula that would be fair.
I'm not trying, I don't think we have a.
Fifteen grand a year, right?
I, I don't.
I, I, I object to this.
Which is nothing.
I, I.
That is nothing.
I, I object to the.
With the amount of business they do.
Fair, we're trying to make it even, cause we don't make it even for businesses, right? We don't, we can't, I mean, we're trying, we're actively trying to bring in more businesses that could potentially draw away from their business.
Fifteen thousand is nothing.
So, I, I don't wanna try and make it.
Well, yours would be smaller, it'd be less seats.
But, the commonality, which is good here, is that we all think, all, all, we all wanna keep the vibrancy and the outdoor seating.
Correct.
And it all going still.
Just wanna make it more equitable if we can.
Exactly, right.
And the solution to closing the street easily is you're doing the whole streetscape over. They've got the bollards that recess down in the ground with a lock, you pull them up at night. Now you got protected for cars not driving through.
Bingo.
That's what they do in the, right?
See, I do have some good ideas.
It's like in your, oh, well, like in Salzburg, you know, in the morning, they, all of the bollards are down so that all the, in the old city, all the deliveries can come into the old city and then as soon as businesses open, the bollards come up and.
Is it too late to do that?
Probably.
Just put some stanchions in.
But you gotta get it obviously at the other end by the village hall too, so, but it's.
Change order number one. Oh, change order number one.
Ooh, and I, and I know who can pay for it, I know who can pay for that.
Yeah, that's true.
Then the other thing was in my mind, if you do that, redevelop the street as part of the streetscape, brick paper and all,
can that, can you have a special SSA? That has properties that pay to use that.
But they have to agree to it.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I've got a.
It's hard.
An SSA is put inside of this.
The fee's easier probably.
It's too, it's too few properties to do it.
Right, right.
Gotta save some of the power for later. So I don't think we're getting anywhere on the fee thing, it sounds like we're kinda split down the middle.
I think, I don't think so.
I think if you ask the residents of this town, you will rapidly find no split.
Well, I'm, but I don't, I don't want the owners.
Call it what, I don't wanna nickel and dime people, but. She's a, no, I mean, she's a pay.
Anyone knows real estate should know, you gotta pay for what you use.
Yeah, but I also wanna keep people coming too.
And we want the sales taxes, we want the property taxes, we want the increase in our property values, we're making money hand over fist. This isn't like a performative sort of thing, it's real.
I think it's far more important for a little Honeycomb to get those two spots and to charge a fee to Good Grapes. I think it's more important to Spirit Elephant, if they wanna do something in the alley, they don't, but if they did.
Well, they did, they took their parking, they took their parking spaces.
Or, or any restaurant to have flexibility that we're open to, I think that's way more important than, and I agree with, I've kinda changed my thinking based on some of the comments here. We don't wanna nickel and dime, but I mean.
I, I think, I'm trying to think what the, outside of what fees he would get. I mean, even if Toco paid fifteen grand and somebody else, I mean, is it, is it a hundred grand?
No, you won't.
More, I mean, in overall fees, probably not. So you're, it kinda becomes, what are we doing then? So.
We're nickel and diming.
Yeah.
Huh?
All right.
I, I, I get it.
I'm just trying to make it a little neutral.
What I'm hearing is, is we've kinda gone both ways on this, but we seem to be sitting more on the, the no fee position.
But I think that, that Liz, when you go around to these restaurants and so on, you need to tell them, hey guys, what can we do for you? I'm sure you do that anyway, but what can we do, you know, thinking outside the box? I mean, just let them know that, that we want to do whatever we can to support their business.
As, as we've done.
A, a, as we've done, but now.
Name another village that works.
But we acknowledge that we are doing something special for Good Grapes. For Toco, we are. And if someone, you know, Good Grapes wanted to have a little concert in the, you know, post office parking lot, we would probably say, yeah, you know, go ahead and do that.
Do it on the corner there where we don't care.
Do it on the corner, but I mean, that's public, that's public space, maybe we're dealing with ninety-three Grove Road. We're, we're starting to deal with public space.
Right.
And, and we're open for business on that. And I think that's way more important, I mean, it's way more important for Honeycomb to get that twelve by twelve spot than it is to charge Good Grapes a thousand dollars a year. I mean, it just is.
So I think what, how to best summarize this is, A, if, if you buy into the market intrusion, if we were, if we constantly like to balance competition because of this special favor, it's going to be extremely expensive. It'll be a very high fee if it's gonna be legitimate, so it won't be nickel and diming. You know, we, John and I ran through the formula and we came up with what, fifteen grand, John?
Well, I just redid it on paper, it's five dollars a seat per day.
But we have to charge it upfront because you know.
I know, but you have to know how, you can give.
Hundred and twenty days.
Right, whatever the day is, yeah.
So that's.
And you have to know how many days, how many seats they have.
That's sixty thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, and that is not the message that I don't think anybody at this table wants to send to the market. Well, you're one.
Okay, on record, I'm one.
But I mean, that's the only way a fee makes sense.
Because if you double the space, that's what it'll cost them.
And because if we, if we reduce it to some minimums number, it just becomes obnoxious and another government fee, somebody has to pay just to, to the pleasure of going through the permanent process. So, and I don't think, I hear anybody except John at the table saying that they're, they have the appetite for the size of the fee for temporary dining, unless, Rob, I'm not sure.
I, I'm still trying to figure out where you're at on this.
I, I'm, I'm trying to look at, I'm, I'm not turning a blind eye to the first half of this conference, I'm just, if I bought a restaurant here and, and buy the Wuppens, Pat's Land, somebody has, can put out fifteen more seats a night, sixty more seats a night, it would blow me out too.
For free.
But should we as government?
Would you try to expand your, your, your operation?
It depends, it depends on my plan, circumstances, it depends if I have a.
He's walking to buy a bigger space somewhere.
It's, it, it depends on a lot of things, if I wanna open up a kitchen and it could be a lot of other mitigating circumstances, which I'm not prepared to do.
But maybe you need a village variance and you could come and get one. But maybe you need a village variance, and you could come and get one.
It, it's possible. I mean, I, and I can't, there's, but this, this becomes really a, this is almost a rule about one restaurant. But I can see it happening other places. I definitely can, I can see, I can see Mara, I, I can see Gage coming into play. Definitely the park. Well, yeah, I mean, across from Park, there you've got the Japanese restaurant and Once Upon a Bagel there, right?
That could change to something else.
And then if we can ever convince the owners of the old forest camp, they get moving. There's parking adjacent to that that would be really ripe for outdoor dining that we own.
Oh, those, uh-huh.
Yeah, those diagonals, at Merrill. So there's a lot of little places like this. And the point is, we haven't even thought of them all.
But no, I agree, but nobody can do, especially if we're wanting to do, continue to compete with all of that area whatsoever. If, if it's only become more of a bigger discrepancy.
Well, let's...
So I, I guess I'm...
By the way, they're gonna be without outdoor seating for three months, history says you might do that, so...
So they're gonna...
They're gonna... They're gonna close for two months.
Yeah.
Strickly calls for two months, end of June, mid-April.
Moving on there before, I mean, so I, I guess, I would look at limiting potentially. Maybe it isn't a fee, but maybe the same thing, the day for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or a limit. So the restaurants are, kitchens are. You know what, there's nothing cooler, and then, and somebody else, I, I've heard that a couple times now. Walk down Chestnut on a Tuesday night.
I hear you.
Dead is a dornio usually. Now, all of a sudden, you turn the corner and it's, wow, look at all these people sitting out on a Tuesday.
I hear you.
And that is why home values in this town are going bluey. People walk this town and they see it, and they're like, this is where I wanna be. That, that's why I wanna pick Weneka over Coward, or Glencoe, or wherever else, because it's amazing. They are making us money and our residents' money hand over fist.
And they're feeling it.
And, and that's right. And everyone who is lucky enough to buy a house in this town is gonna have a nice retirement if they sell that house.
Well, that's, that's interesting.
Well, we're, we're, and all that other stuff, right? But, yeah.
I really liked it that time.
You know, the, the one thing that's nice is we don't have to make a decision forever, right? We don't bind future councils, so if there's new issues that come up, you just pull from there. I think you've got what you need, put it like now, right?
It, it could vary what we, because we are starting to see a shift in what people's tastes are as masks come off. People may decide, I'm not getting this thing outside in sixty-five degrees as I was two months ago.
Or ninety.
You know, you may not have as much demand over time.
We don't have to overthink it.
Right, right, and we have the flexibility.
So...
You wanna help me here, Rob?
So I'm now non-fee, so just to make it clear, because I don't want to...
Rob and I just did a little psych form, because you can keep in score here, and, and I think he's, my notes are all... No, I, what I, what I'm hearing is, is the council's moving towards no fee because it's either owners or nickel and diming.
Right.
Right? And we wanna maintain vibrancy and not create this incentive, right? To, to look creatively for outdoor space. So I think what's in front of you then is looking for no fee and let staff work administratively effective as we can to do license agreements, because they're, they're not gonna be the same thing, right?
Right.
So Honeycomb may need two spaces, we know maybe a few adjacent, that may be...
Be more, whatever, but you, the license agreement will have the duration, it'll have the hours, have the terms of use, but there just won't be a fee. And, you know, we did the same thing with Hometown, and we were able to knock that out without any trouble, so...
Do we limit seats? That's another way to do it, to say, because before it used to be about twelve tables.
Yeah.
And now we're almost back to village hall. So I guess my question is, maybe that's a way to do it. You still have the vibrancy, it's still cooking, but you're not like back to village hall.
I remember when Bruno was doing it either the first year or the second year, it kinda blurs together now, but there was this discussion about how far he would come up towards the... Right, because he had the, the spot next door, wanted to maintain some later hours, so it was like, make sure you're back a little bit. But, yeah, we can get in, into those areas.
That's another way to deal with it. Keep the vibrancy, but say, you're not going back. This is it, you get twenty tables, that's it.
Well, I think, again, that each individual application stands on its own merit. And I would, I would trust that, that Rob and Kristen and Liz would look at these applications and say, uh, too far.
It's not, it's not a limit, sorry.
Then we get to see it and say, it's thirty seats, not the fifty he asked for. And then we go from there. But, you know, the, the good thing is, is we, we have a great staff that looks at these things and thinks through all those permutations, so we don't have to. So, you know, I think, let them do their job, and then if we're not quite so sure, then we can yank it off the consent agenda and bat it around up, up at our level. I think that'd be the easiest way to do it.
To my knowledge, nobody's complained about it other than the other business owners, right? Everybody else, it's, it's just uniformly, I mean, has there been any residents that...
Who knows about it?
No, 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 I'm just saying about the use of, right? We didn't have received any complaints from residents. It's simply, it's what we said before about who this is.
But, but if you posted...
And then those closed adjacent are part of it.
But, but if you were to post, Weneka is looking at giving free space for no fee versus a rent. I bet you'd have a lot of people talking.
Good. Let, hopefully their restaurateur is talking about coming to town, you know? I mean, that's the main thing, is...
Because we hear nine times out of ten, why isn't the village doing something about the empty storefronts, right? That's more often, you know...
That was all I heard five years ago. No one was talking about parking.
You could fill more storefront by not having the seats in the street, make more space for the same cost. You fill another space.
They're not necessarily exchangeable.
We're also acting like it's three sixty-five, perfect weather outside.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
That, you know, it's a limited amount of time that this is even a possibility.
It'd be interesting to see how many days actually...
Like, the concern, I, you brought up a great example, if somebody's gonna find a two-seat restaurant and then fill outside, no one would ever do that. Well, I mean, in theory, they do it for a different reason.
But we'd never let them do it on, on, I'm, I'm sorry.
But how would it be, in theory, like a Toko, how would they ever survive the entire year by having the two seats? So that's not a business sense anyway, like, that scenario, I understand, but not in theory, it's gonna never happen.
I do think there's a way to limit, I think we have to be cognizant of the, of very good restaurants and citizens and taxpayers that have come here with legitimate complaints.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think we have to say, let's, let's acknowledge the pain, whether we, it's verified or not, there's, it's a belief, but we can limit it, keep the vibrancy, but limit the number of tables. So you, the look is there, and people can get out there, but it isn't all the way to the goal.
There needs to be a way to make it, I think.
I think Rob had a good summary.
Yeah, I think, I think you had a great summary.
And maybe the limit is a percentage of your indoor seating.
No, I don't think we're gonna go there, because every single application, it runs contrary to the statement that, bring us your, bring us your dreams, bring us your ideas, we'll take a look at it and see if we can share them. And if we can't share the dream the way you presented to us, we'll help you maybe tweak your dreams so that it fits with our expectations. And once you start putting numbers and things on it, it makes their, their job a hell of a lot harder, too. Because sometimes, look, everything we do has implications to it, and a lot, and what might work to solve one problem ends up causing a gigantic problem somewhere else.
There's always uninterned...